It's two o'clock.
Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Pete Festerson.
The United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
I just wanted to take this time to recognize this is our last city council meeting before the Labor Day weekend that's coming up. And I know we have a number of labor leaders in our presence here today to talk about a few agenda items a little bit later on. But I wanted to recognize at this time the contributions the working people of this city make to our city and to our economy and all the leadership they provide philanthropically to us. I know we have Max McDonald, the president of AFL-CIO here. We have Terry Moore, longtime labor leader in Omaha. We have Brad Brewer from the Steamfitters and several of his colleagues. Dan Hughes from IBEW and several other folks who are here that we want to appreciate here today. It seems strange not to be having September 1st or a huge parade this weekend, but that is a sign of the times. And in lieu of that, I'd ask you to stand and just be recognized at this time by the city council. Thanks. And one more recognition, I think, in addition to our labor leaders. I'd like to thank city council staff and the city clerk staff as well. This has been a very busy summer for all of us, and when it's busy for us, it's busy for them. So I know they've been working really hard on behalf of the citizens of Omaha. We hope they get a break this Labor Day too, and appreciate all the work they do for us. Thank you.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of the council's business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, Mayor's veto for the resolution to approve a revision to the 2021 recommended budget to increase the general fund in the mayor's office by $25,000 for a health director.
The opinion of the chair, this item dies for lack of emotion. Next item.
Item seven, Mayor's veto for the resolution to approve a revision to the 2021 recommended budget to increase community service programs by $1,850,000.
Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I sponsored this amendment to the budget and, of course, support the override here today. I think the proposed budget, as I said at the time, is status quo and isn't responsive to the concerns we've been receiving. Hours upon hours of testimony, literally this summer, on issues like mental health and economic disparities and poverty. And the fact is, we should be doing more to address these things as a city and as a community. And that's what this amendment does as a first step. It would add one and a half million dollars to mental health programs across the city, $350,000 to job training. And I think if the veto is not overridden, the budget that could get approved, there's literally nothing new to demonstrate our work in these areas or that we were listening during the summer to these many different issues. It does propose this money from the cash reserve. I understand the concerns with that. But I also understand we just received $60 million in CARES Act funding. And even if this is approved, we'll still be adding money to the cash reserve in 2021. So I know this only passed with four votes. I'm hopeful that it could be a fifth today. But should it not be successful, what I want to say is, in a positive way, that when we discussed this item, I think every single council member and the mayor and the police chief and everyone involved in this discussion indicated an interest and recognized the need to do more in the area of mental health. And I know personally, I continue, I'll continue to work on this issue as we work with the community, philanthropic leaders, providers, elected officials, to come up with an overall strategy to address this issue. It's the right thing to do and it's badly needed. With that, I motion to override the veto.
Does anyone else wish to be recognized? Madam Clerk, roll call. Oh, Rich. I'm sorry. We're going to raise hands since our cue system.
Machine's not working?
Just like school. You ought to remember this.
Thank you. I agree, we do need to take a look at mental health. But I think we need a program in place instead of working money than it, we ought to decide what we want to do. And I would like to have Mr. Curtis come to the mic.
Steve Curtis, Finance Director.
The last time we spoke on this issue, I did bring up my concern about the cash reserve. And could you give me some idea of what shape or situation we are in right now?
Going into 2020, we have about 13.6 million in the cash reserve. We by charter can have about 35 million, and I would encourage us all to think about getting there. The pandemic certainly gave us all a reminder that we could be without funds. On the CARES money, just so we make sure we're not mixing apples and oranges, our total fund losses from revenues are projected to be about 75 million. We hope to get 60. We're still working out all the details of how to get that. So it would potentially make the general fund whole. It wouldn't make all other funds whole, just if we're trying to see how that all fits in.
Have you ever been associated when there's been a shortfall in cash reserves in any time in your life?
You know, there are plenty of companies that I worked for where it would have been nice to have more money, if that answers that question.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to know, and I'm to assume you're saying that we need to take a very close look at our cash reserves.
I did. I think we talked about last time, or I mentioned that if you were a household, they, I suggest you have three to six months of your normal operating expenses, which in our case would be somewhere between 100 million to 200 million. While that's not quite feasible, and our charter limits us to 8%, I would suggest we try to get to the 8%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further hands? Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion fails, four to three. Item eight, a resolution to approve the 2021 City of Omaha budget with revisions.
No hands. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
No.
Motion passes, five to two. Item nine, a resolution to approve setting the 2021 property tax request as specified on the agenda.
Chair would note, the city council held the LB 103 hearing earlier today. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Omaha Box Building subdivision with a waiver of Section 53-84D Lot Frontage located south of 21st Street, E and Avenue J. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 10 begins at this time. Is there any, are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Jean Leahy Mall Replat 3, located northeast of 10th and Farnum Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 11 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 12 to 14 can be considered together for Ponca Hills Estates, located northwest of Northern Hills Drive and 66th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees communication opposition. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat for Ponca Hills Estates. Item 13, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Item 14, a resolution to approve the Ponca Hills Estates subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 12 through 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Mark Westergaard with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. Here representing Jim Smith, who's the owner and developer. It's a 17 lot subdivision, acreage subdivision out at the northwest corner of 66th and Northern Hills Drive. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. One public hearing can be held for items 15 and 16 for property located at 201 North 90th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 15, an ordinance to rezone this property from R1 District and R2 District to R5 District. Item 16, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC Overlay District to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearing on items 15 and 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Matt Wagoner, BVH Architecture, on behalf of the owner, First Covenant Church. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve the 44th and Douglas Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan, located southwest of 44th and Douglas Streets, and in amount up to $3 million.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This TIF project is a new hotel, seven stories, located at 44th and Douglas, have 95 rooms, 7,300 square feet of commercial on the main floor in three bays. Total project cost is about 17 and a half million. They're asking for 3 million in TIF support. It's been approved by the TIF Committee, the City Planning Board, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve the HNHC Central Park Scattered Housing Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for the locations as listed on the agenda in an amount up to $150,000.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This is an affordable housing project by Holy Name, 11 new single-family homes. If you look on our map here, this is Fontana Boulevard, Sorensen, they're all clustered on some vacant sites right in that area. Mike Golly is the director of Holy Name, he's here with us today. It's a low-income housing tax credit project, a little north of $3 million. They're asking for 150,000 in TIF support, complies with our master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. President. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, if you could come down just for a second? And it's not necessarily that you have to say anything. I just wanted to take the opportunity. You do a lot of work, especially in some badly needed work in the district. We know that the work that you do, even with other nonprofits, as it relates to affordable housing, is, you know, a little bit more than a drop in the bucket. But the fact of the matter is, you continue to do it and you continue to do it diligently. And just want you to know that we appreciate the work that you do in North Omaha, providing affordable housing for many people who may not be able to do it in any other condition. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Congressman Gray.
Your name and address, please.
Oh, 4324 Fort Street. Mike Golly, Executive Director of Holy Name House.
Thank you. No further hands. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 19, to consider a liquor license addition application for the Casual pint located at 8718 Countryside Plaza to add an area approximately 50 feet by 13 feet to the west.
The public hearing on item 19 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name's David Venier, and I'm the owner of the Casual pint.
And your address?
8718 Countryside Plaza.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Lucky Tiger Izakaya located at 3852 Farnum Street.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Dionisio with ITI LLC. I'm the owner of Lucky Tiger Izakaya.
And your address, please.
13011 Nebraska Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 21, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Sapra Liquor Store located at 8524 Park Drive.
The public hearing on item 21 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Justina Struck. I am the attorney on behalf of the applicant, and my address is 1125 South 103rd Street.
In Omaha, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items 22 and 23 were held on August 25, 2020. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 24 through 41 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these agenda items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name and address, who you represent, if you are a proponent or opponent, and provide your testimony within three minutes. Yes? Yes. Item 41 will be removed from the consent agenda, and we'll have a separate vote. And public hearing. Second. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on item 41 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was trying to ban for a little time. I think Rachel Jacobson was trying to make it down here for this item. I didn't see her come in yet, so I'll just make the motion to approve, but was hoping to give Rachel the opportunity to talk a little bit about this project, which is, will be an incredible addition to all the work that has taken place down on the riverfront and a beautiful science center for kids and adults of all ages to come and enjoy. There's so much activity happening down there, and this is just another anchor and another reason to bring people down to the area and enjoy the riverfront park. So with that, I'll make the motion for approval.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 42, an ordinance to add Article 3, Sections 12-41 through 12-51 to the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Prevention of COVID-19 to require individuals to wear facial coverings. A is Amendment of the Whole, B is Amendment of the Whole dated August 27, 2020, C is Communication and Support.
I would note, the public hearing on Agenda Item 42 was held August 18. Procedurally, council members, Amendment of the Whole B is, I believe, what council intends to take up. Upon a motion to approve an amendment of the whole, the floor would then be open to any floor amendments. Mr. Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to start by thanking the citizens of Omaha. I think a clear majority are cooperating and complying with the emergency mask ordinance we all passed a few weeks ago and doing so voluntarily. I think it creates a standard and expectation throughout the community, and that it's working as intended. I also want to thank the police department. I think their approach has been balanced and educational in nature, and that was the intention, too. I do think we took a measured approach by establishing that ordinance for 30 days and receiving regular reports from the county health director, who is here today, including data on positivity rates and number of cases and hospital utilization. We just received that most recent report yesterday, so just a couple of observations from that. When we look at the total number of new cases per week in the Omaha zip code since August 8, by week, it's ranged from 719 to 756. It dipped the week of 822 to 486 and is now back up to 628. In terms of the positivity rates since that time, it started at 9.8%, went to 10.2%, dipped to 8.6%, but now is at 10.7% again. And when we look at some other important indicators, there are many, but one that I know we all watch and the governor watches too, is the occupancy rate for hospitals. In Metro Omaha, that's been 77% and then 81%, 81% and now 79%. So these are all things that I think we're following very closely and are of concern. I think it's important, when we make this decision today and when we make any future decisions, that it be based on the data we're seeing, and that's what this does. So what we do have here today is a regular ordinance that would extend what's currently in place until October 20. And it needs to be approved today in order so that we don't have a gap in what we currently have in place if we intend to extend the measures, because the current ordinance ends on September 16, and that's when this would go into effect. There's one clarification involved to the exemptions. It was an issue brought by Councilmember Melton, which I agree with, to make it clear that sports teams, when doing physical exercise and exerting themselves in a strong way, are also exempt from having to wear masks. I think that was the intention. The example I always use is, you know, high school football season has started. I don't think anyone expected football players to be wearing masks when they're playing, and they're not, so it just kind of clarifies that provision. But I will say that all provisions are subject to a person or an entity establishing stricter requirements should they desire. But it does make it clear that that's not required, should this be approved today. The other simple things it does is just codify what is already an expectation for signage, and then, as I mentioned, extend the timeframe to October 20. So I think it is a simple and practical thing we can all be doing to continue to manage a pandemic in our community and as we work to keep our schools reopened and in some cases, return our kids to school. There are still 54,000 kids in Omaha Public Schools that are online right now. And I think it's important, we support them and our teachers and try to get them back in school and support our economy on the way to recovery. So we continue to reevaluate this on a periodic basis, and that's the intention. Some of us have commented, this has been an unusual process, and it has. I can't ever recall doing an emergency ordinance before. That is unusual. And we shouldn't be in the business of doing emergency ordinances on a regular basis. So that's why we're considering a regular ordinance that we do have here today going forward, that, as the council president noted, did go through our three-week process and had a public hearing and is substantively the same as what is already in place anyway. So lastly, I'll just say, I hope we demonstrate support today. I know all of our metropolitan school districts have indicated their support today for this extension. I appreciate the mayor's remarks and her support for an ongoing ordinance as we try to manage this situation in our community, and I hope my colleagues respond as well. So I would go ahead and move Amendment of the Whole, which is Amendment B.
Any hands wishing to be recognized? Councilmember Harding?
Comments now.
Just before you do, I would remind councilmembers, since there's been a motion and second on the Amendment of the Whole, that if you have an amendment to the amendment as a whole, now would be the time procedurally to offer that.
Oh, thank you for that reminder, because I thought it was after the adoption, so. First, then I'll comment. I do have an Amendment of the Whole that you've all received. Do you want me to read it, or?
The floor is yours.
Okay. Anyway, I've distributed Amendment of the Whole. Basically, it's for voluntary associations to be listed as exemptions, which would include places of worship and private schools, and so I'll make that motion.
There's an amendment on the floor to the Amendment of the Whole for Councilmember Harding. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion on the amendment to the Amendment of the Whole, Item B? Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Mr. President.
No.
Motion fails, three to four.
No. The motion on the floor now is on the ordinance at second. Are there for any further people wishing to speak? Councilmember Melton.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I think today being September 1, to actually pass something that goes until October 20, and I guess this question may go to Paul. So in the event that we'd want to lift it, would this have to go on for three weeks in order for us to cancel the ordinance?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. Yes, it'd be an amendment of the ordinance, assuming this becomes an ordinance, and that would be three readings. That is correct.
So, I mean, and so my point is, is if, because we have this, so children, you know, the age of five and six are wearing these masks. I received multiple emails from parents whose children were suffering physically from some of the masks. There's not, you'll be removed from the council. Even if you agree with me, you can't speak, okay? Follow the rules of the, of the chamber, okay? Thank you. There's no way for us to remove it. And so that's why, in my opinion, and I appreciate the fact that this council continued to adopt the amendments that I had in here so that kids could get mask breaks, and I appreciate the fact that you left those in. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Festerson, for considering the sports amendment and actually not requiring my vote in order to get that. So I appreciate that, doing it for the kids. But I just think, doing something on September 1, when we've only had a couple weeks, we haven't seen a massive change, and I know that we're going to hear from people on both sides, masks work, masks don't work. I'm not going to make that decision, because actually, I don't believe I'm qualified to make that decision. However, I liked the emergency ordinance, because I think it's something we should revisit, and we could revisit an emergency ordinance every two weeks, every 30 days. What we're doing today is enacting something that we can't remove before October 20. And it is something so restrictive that we don't have the ability to change our mind if the facts show us that maybe we are wrong. if the facts show us that maybe we are wrong or that this isn't a good idea. So that's where, and I know Councilwoman Jerome, you agree with me, I'm part of it. You don't think that that's why this body should be the one doing it. And I agree, but, but here we are. My problem is, is this council didn't have to do this because we could continue to do it on September fifteenth. We could reissue one, and it could be for two weeks. It could be for three weeks. We would have more control over it that way than we are today. So I think something like a mask mandate, which is so intrusive on people, to pass it and say we can't even remove it until October twentieth in the event we do change our mind, just seems to me the wrong way to do it. We should keep it an emergency ordinance so that we have more flexibility on when we can remove it. So again, I don't regret my, my vote the first time to enact it because I, I think the amendments I made were absolutely necessary for our children. I can tell you, my son needs more than a couple of the mass breaks he's getting now. I think it's affecting the children's learning, but that has nothing to do with our city council right now because we're allowing for the mass breaks. The schools are in charge of deciding whether, after our ordinance expires, whether or not there's mass in schools. So with that, I just, I just wanted to make my point that this is just too long. It's too long to put it in place without the ability to be able to revoke it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Thank you. To be honest with you, I'm a little bit confused because I, I did not realize we could do that. I was told that we couldn't have one after another, that we had to go this route. At least that's how I interpreted it. So I do have some question on that. But I also did make contact with two of the large school districts in my, the district that I happen to represent, which would be Millard and Westside. They want the mask, to be honest with you. They see this as a parallel. This would help them because they're very concerned about what's happening in their schools. So they, both of those school districts said that they would like to see this to be extended. And just on the idea, you said H-two or H-five. I don't know if you've been on an airplane lately, but I think they even require on some of the airplanes, H-two below, do not have to wear a mask, or above, too. So throughout the nation, there's some really interesting degrees of who'd wear the mask. But I would like to know whether we can extend or, somebody needs to tell me that if they can.
Yeah, the, I asked, the question is whether this ordinance, if it's passed and becomes effective as law, assuming there's four votes and the mayor signs it, or it's returned without her signature. To extend the sunset would, as the city attorney said, require an introduction as an ordinance to amend this, and that would have to be, if you wanted three readings and a time to go effect, introduced effectively on September twenty-two, to do whatever you wanted to do to amend it by something to go into effect October twenty-one. Does that answer your question?
May I interrupt because I think what you were asking, I think what you're asking was from what I said. We could do another emergency ordinance on September fifteenth, and, and we are perfectly, we were allowed to do so. Mr. Kratz, am I correct?
Kratz, City Attorney, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Kratz.
Right, the emergency ordinance that's in place now expires September fifteenth.
Correct, and on September fifteenth, we could do another one if the stats showed that, that it was necessary. We could then issue another mandate that could go to October twentieth.
That is an option on the floor. If council member wishes to do that, assuming this doesn't pass.
That would be something that you would address on September fifteenth, so that you would have time to look at the thirty days of that.
Right, assuming this fails, for whatever reason, if, if any council member wishes to put that on the agenda for September fifteenth, that is an option.
Correct.
By, I think, greater than twenty-four hours before the meeting.
I, I think that was the question you were.
Right, but again, I'm just, if this passed, that sort of doesn't matter.
If this passes and becomes law, then that would not, that would be moot.
I don't want to be mooted.
I hate being mooted.
Councilmember Gray had his hand up before you, Councilmember Harding. I'll get to you in just a second. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I guess, first of all, when we, if we pass this ordinance and we say October twentieth, is that, is that a sunset then, Paul? So after that, it's over? So, and we, and in order for us, if this, if, if this extends longer, then we'd have to do another ordinance? Is that what, is that what it is? Okay. If I could, Dr. Poor, if you could come to the microphone, please, just for a couple of seconds, I got a couple of questions.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Adipoor, Douglas County Health Department.
Thank you, Dr. Poor.
Dr. Poor, I need your address for the record.
One 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 Forty-first Street.
Thank you. Dr. Poor, first of all, let me ask you this. When we're talking about mask mandate and we're talking about, at some point in time, ending that mask mandate, what is the threshold that is recommended by most of the experts as to when we should probably think about lifting that? Is it five percent? Is it something under that? Tell me what the threshold would be.
Yeah.
Over two, and it has to be, my understanding is over a two-week period it has to maintain this sort of threshold. Am I correct?
Councilmember, that's a very good question, and it's a question that is being asked all over the country at this time. What are some benchmarks when we can actually release those mandates? So the benchmark that I'm proposing and have had some discussion with Nebraska Medicine is a positivity rate less than five percent. I have shared that since the beginning, that that is really, all the communities who really feel they have the virus under control are having a positivity percentage less than five. What that means is that we are doing enough testing in the community that the potential of positives is less than five percent. In addition to what people are looking at are case numbers. How many cases do we see in our community? What is the seven-day daily average? And I have given you that today on all of these spreadsheets that you get. And just for everybody to know, the positive, the, the cases per million per day on a seven-day rolling average as of the end of midnight Saturday is hundred and seventy-eight point eight cases per million per day. Bring that down to Douglas County. That means potentially six new cases per day. That is what we are shooting for. That is the, that is the number that we would like to see, sorry. Ten, ten new cases per million per day is what we would like to see. So I've discussed this with the dean of the College of Public Health. He feels, I see some shaking, shaking heads. He feels that that is a good, those are two good benchmarks to use, ten cases per million per day plus a positivity rate less than five percent. It's also the model that the chancellor of the University of Nebraska developed, and the Greater Chamber of Commerce is using in regards to opening businesses. Those are the two indicators that they are, that they are using also. So to me, those would make sense. We have less transmission in our community. We can really identify where the single cases are and where the exposure potentially occurred. So does that answer your question?
Yes, that answers my question. And my, my second question is, if you know, without having to look at numbers or anything, because I know this is, I'm just hitting you kind of cold with this, but when was the last time we were close to five percent?
There were actually two times I have looked back where we were close to five percent, and they were, once was in April and once, actually, I think in June. So very, very few times, but we have been less than five percent at, once at five and once less than five percent.
Okay. My, my final question has to do with, and these are just some things that I hear on Facebook and some other places, so I don't, I don't necessarily place a lot of credence in them, but I should ask the question. When a person dies, when a person is, passes on and the, the die, the reason for that death is, is COVID-related, does that necessarily mean that COVID caused that death? In other words, what I'm saying is there are people that say most of the deaths are occurring because of other conditions and COVID is, is a driving factor in that, but not necessarily the cause. Can you respond to that?
Correct. So our dashboard from the beginning has always indicated if there were comorbidities, if the individual had any underlying illnesses, diabetes, cardiovascular diseases, and so. So if you go on our dashboard, I think today, there are eleven percent of our death who do not have an underlying illness. Eleven percent. So in those cases, you would say COVID caused the death. However, in all the other cases, eighty-nine percent of them, you actually, it's not different than flu. It's, you are at higher risk if you have comorbidities. So COVID was a related death, so to say, was related to the death. It probably shortened your lifespan, therefore, but it was not really the cause of, of it. It's COVID-related. And so every death certificate, every case that we have on our dashboard, we have a death certificate. We look at that death certificate very carefully, and we see what does it say, and then we compare. Does that individual actually have a test that has been done for COVID? Because what you do not want is physicians saying, well, you know, your symptoms are probably COVID-related, and then you die two days later, you have no test, and you are being counted as COVID. So we are very strict, there are very strict guidelines that the CDC and the State of Nebraska has in place. When are we calling a COVID death? And the good news is, you know, I like to share some good news. We have a mortality rate of one point two percent in Douglas County, and that is one of the lowest mortality rate. On an average in the nation, we are at three point one percent. So that's, that's really good news.
Thank you, Dr. Poor. I, I guess my, my, my comment to that, I'm done, thank you. I don't have any more questions. I just wanted to, and then, you know, because my, my, my concern is, on the other side of yours, Councilmember Melton, I'm not sure that if, if, if you have to have a two-week rolling average of less than five percent, that we're going to get there even by October nineteenth. And with, yeah, I, I mean, I just, I don't know, and, and, and if October nineteenth is a, is a, is a sunset date, we'd have to revisit this at some point in time sooner than later. If, if we, if the rolling average is five, and, and if the rolling average has to be five percent over a two-week period, and we've been nowhere close to that since June, my concern is exactly the opposite of Councilmember Melton. I'm not sure that October nineteenth is going to get us there. And so, Paul, I guess, what do we do in, in that case? If, do we, do we try to recommend another emergency ordinance? Or what do we do at that point if we're at October nineteenth and our rolling average is still nowhere close to five percent?
Councilmember Gray, there's two options.
Okay.
You can introduce a, a new ordinance, regular ordinance, if this passes on September twenty-two, which would have a public hearing on September twenty-nine. If this ordinance does not pass, and we're back to September fifteen, we can consider an emergency ordinance, which can have a time period in and of itself put into it. Or you can wait and take your chances and do nothing. So there's three options. If this fails, we can take up an emergency ordinance on the fifteenth. If this passes and you wish to preserve the ability to have another regular ordinance, you can introduce that on the twenty-second with a public hearing on the twenty-ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, I'll, I'll end my remarks. I'm just saying that I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned that on October nineteenth, we're not going to be anywhere near close to five percent rolling average over a two-week period. That's my concern. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Harding, thank you for being patient. You're recognized.
Dr. Poor, could I, I'm sorry, I should have had you stay down closer to the podium, but while you're walking down, I will make a comment that I'll expand on a little bit later, is that this conversation that you just had the last couple of minutes and what we had previous is another illustration of what I said a couple of weeks ago and what I'll expand on here in a minute. This is, this is not the proper way to be doing this. This is not how it should be done, but I'll, I'll touch on that a little later. But Dr. Poor, thank you for coming back. I had a couple of questions. So you, you talked about the, the fact that we have been at five percent once and maybe less than five, less than five percent once, I'll say since March, since the onset of this, at least in our country. Is that, and that's, that's correct, right?
That's fair. Adipoor, Douglas County Health Department.
One eleven South Forty-first.
Right.
One eleven South Forty-first.
So why weren't we wearing masks before now? Why wasn't that the recommendation to wear masks before now if we were above that five percent for all that time?
That's a very good question. So in the beginning, you remember, we had DHMs, direct health measures that closed businesses. That was in response to the high rates, the high transmissions we were seeing. Bars were closed, restaurants were closed. That was the response at this time.
But we also, during that time, we've had ups and downs when bars and restaurants and things were opened and closed, and so why was there not that concern at that point?
So, but not as high. We really had two waves, and that the first wave, we had the DHMs where the governor decided to close restaurants, bars, and all the other DHMs. So then it went down, and we, we felt like we could relax some of those standards. And now I think all of us have, have decided that we would like the economy to go on. We don't want to go back in a closed down again. So what other tools do we have, really, to go on to business and, but still keep transmission, decrease transmission that we have? And the only tool we really have is either we close down businesses again or we wear masks and leave business open, leave schools open. So that's the, that's the difference.
In, in looking at the, the curve after one of the easings in, in July, we had ups and downs. So I'm not sure that, that, what you just said, I'm not sure the evidence completely backs up the reason for the variations in that curve.
It absolutely backs it up if you look at it, and you can put.
No, we had, we had some, we had little peaks and valleys along the way since, since the easing in, in July.
But we always have that. Also, don't forget, we had a lot of clusters. We had clusters in food packing industries. We had really some good-sized clusters in that. So that also increased a little bit. We brought more testing, especially specifically to some of those areas, tried some other things. So yes, you always see a slide. We could say, actually, you know, we opened schools, and therefore we also are seeing, potentially last week, we know, you have read it in the Omaha World Health, Creighton had forty cases. Well, that's in this case count that you have in front of you. So I think we all are aware that there are certain circumstances that could actually increase and decrease this all over.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I'll go back to the, what I was saying a couple of weeks ago and what I've said here today. I was, I was supportive of the emergency ordinance, and like Councilman Melton, or Councilwoman Melton pointed out, I, I was completely comfortable making that, that vote at that time and appreciated the conversation that we had with, with President Jerem to help get that ball rolling to, to do the emergency ordinance rather than by a regular ordinance. For one, it would put that into effect sooner than the regular ordinance would have, have done so. But again, I'll point out that at the time when it was originally proposed by the, the city health director to implement the mask mandate, it was, and, and that decision was not made, then another twelve days went by before the, before it was implemented. another 12 days went by before it was implemented, only because of the emergency ordinance that we came up with. So now here we sit, and we're talking about an emergency ordinance that we passed just two weeks ago, that has two more weeks to go before the expiration of. And we're sitting here contemplating an ordinance that would go into effect at that time, because an ordinance takes 15 days to be effective after it's passed. And now we're looking at a sunset of October 20th. And all of this is being done without even having an agreed-upon metric or metrics by which to make our decision. We're making this motion or taking this ordinance to a point in time without even having, we don't know where the bar is set. I think I mentioned the last time that I contacted a number of PhDs and MDs about metrics and got three or four different answers from three or four different physicians and PhDs. So I would be more comfortable continuing this with an emergency ordinance. I don't think there's any support for that here today. But I think it also is an illustration of as to why, I used the word a couple of weeks ago, and I'll use it again today, why this is a clunky procedure to have the city council do this by ordinance? Because I think we're just making these motions blindly into the future without having a realistic or an agreed-upon, at least, metric by which to gauge this by. Again, I would be supportive of an emergency ordinance with a reasonable timeline on it, but to make the, to do this by regular ordinance is not the way to do it. We started out by saying what's flattened the curve. We did. Taking the pressure off the hospitals and the beds we have. I think Councilmember Fesserson gave the stats on the bed counts and what's been occupied. But again, those are not all being occupied by COVID patients. And we talked about getting the kids back to school, and I think we've done that successfully, at least for Millard. West Side 66 is going to 50% this Thursday with plans on going to 100% on September 17th. You know, it just seems to me, if we're going to do this, I think we should do it in a more measured way. And a more measured way is not by doing it with an ordinance that is, that goes out till the end of October without even having the first emergency ordinance and all the information associated with that to consider. I'll talk a little bit about the positivity rate that Dr. Poor brought up as well. And we had a conversation about this, Dr. Poor and I did, with some others yesterday. And, look, I'm not, I'm not going to put, my education is certainly not to Dr. Poor's. I certainly appreciate all her knowledge and study on this subject. But I think it's also with the CDC saying earlier this week, or maybe it was at the end of last week, about who should be getting the tests. It's actually, you're not casting a wider, or you're not casting a wide or as wide a net on the testing that you were previously. So if you have a smaller pool of those that you're testing, and those that you're testing are the ones that are more subject to having COVID, then your positivity rate can do nothing but go up. So again, we're talking, I have, the question I have is, what's reasonable? What's that metric? And again, I don't think anyone, and I appreciate Dr. Poor's comments to this point, that, you know, we have this debate nationwide as to what the metric is. We don't know. No one can agree upon what that metric is. But when I hear it's, you know, six, it may be six cases a day in Douglas County, I mean, I think we get six cases a day of, or six cases a day of flu being reported in the flu season. But I just, it reminded me of a sign I saw in a teacher's protest in Chicago that said, until we get to zero. Folks, we're not getting to zero on anything. And I appreciate all the efforts. I appreciate what we're trying to do. I think, as I said early on as well, that I think ideally, I would, I'd rather not have it done with a mandatory mandate. But I agreed with that, with the emergency ordinance, and I would agree with an emergency ordinance again. But until we have, until we know what the metric is, I don't think we should be passing this ordinance. Because we don't, we're not giving a realistic expectation to any of the citizens of Omaha as to when this ends. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Your hand was up before yours, so you'll be next, Councilmember Melton.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I tried to do with Dr. Poor was introduce the possibility of some metrics that we might want to use as a council as we're dealing with this. Being on the Douglas County Health Department, I know that we continue to talk about, and we do have metrics that we talk about trying to get to, and I know one of those metrics is a rolling average of 5% or less over a two-week period. We haven't been there since June. I don't know if that's a metric that the council wants to use or not, but it would seem to me that we ought to find some suitable metric. And one of the problems here is that we've got states and cities and counties trying to figure it out for themselves because they're so lacking in leadership at the top. So while we're trying to figure this out, it would seem, I was trying to put together what I thought might be some metrics that we could use, but, you know, if the council chooses something else, I mean, we can look at that. I don't disagree with the clunkiness of what we're doing here, Mr. Harding. I really don't. But I do think we need to put, I do think we need to put some metrics in place. And I know you're going to get five or six different answers when you talk to different PhDs and others, but I think we need to count more heavily on the public health departments in the hospitals here and our public health director as we're doing that. Because I know at Nebraska Medicine, Dr. Rupp is talking about the same sort of metrics. I know Ali Khan is talking about the same sort of metrics. So I know we've got two, not only are they professional, you know, but they're recognized around the world for the work that they have done. And if our, if our public health director at the medical center says 5%, if our infectious disease doctor who's been at it for many, many years says 5%, if our health director is saying a rolling average of 5%, I think it needs to be considered. That's what I was trying to do here today. But, you know, if we want to decide on another one, that's okay. But I think you're right, Mr. Harding. I think we need to decide on some metrics and what those metrics ought to be so that this council has some sort of guidance as we move forward. But again, my concern is that if you're talking about the, if you're talking about the metrics that we use at the, that is being used at the med center or that is suggested by our health director, a rolling average of 5% over two weeks, I have a concern that October 19th is not going to be soon enough. But, you know, we can continue to talk about it, but, and continue to talk about maybe setting some metrics. But I am concerned about this date. I don't think this is long enough, and, but time will tell, I guess. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Well, first, if we're nowhere near whatever metric can be determined, if we're nowhere near it by October 20th, then I would think that that would show that masks didn't work. I mean, that would be my, that would be my problem if we say we're nowhere near it. In fact, we're the same, or we've gone up, then I guess I don't, I would have, I would be hard-pressed then to say, yeah, the masks are working. So that would be my problem. Second, if you're going to pick a metrics, I think it should be number of persons that are positive. You can't have a metric that can be manipulated. And I know, Dr. Poor, you understand what I'm talking about. If you say you want to get down to, you know, the six person per day, which I think is unreal, but let's say you only test 12 people per day, you're going to be at a 50%, nowhere near 5%, yet you only had 12 people tested. So all you have to do to keep that percentage high is to limit the number of tests, which I heard last week they were starting to do. They were starting to say, we're not testing anybody unless they're sick. So therefore, your percentage could go up higher, but you could have half the number of people testing and half the number of people testing positive. So using a metric like 5% that can be manipulated by the number of tests available or done, to me, doesn't make any sense because of that manipulation piece. So I think it should be people. But when I look back at 2017, in my opinion, I think we should be looking at the mortality rate. Because also, if you have 100 people this week that test positive for COVID, yet 95 of them are asymptomatic, then I don't know that we should be as concerned. And if our mortality rate continues to go down, I mean, we had in 2017, 393 people died of the flu and pneumonia. Currently, we're at about 397, and I'm doing state, not county. So I apologize, I just have the state numbers in front of me. 397 for the state. And I get it, we're only in September. So it is, it's higher for COVID than it is the flu. But again, our mortality rate is still very, very low. It seems to me that that is going down, which is really good, and the people that are testing positive are not getting as sick because the hospitals are not being overwhelmed. Because to me, when I look every day, I read that report from Mr. Rooney. I want to thank you. I probably dream about, you know, his name showing up on my email, because, I mean, for months, all I do is I click on Mr. Rooney's email every time I get it. And I appreciate all the data he shows. And the number of people on ventilators has stayed under 15. Our hospitals are not overwhelmed. Our occupancy rate is good. So we are in a good position. And I think there comes a point in time where, right last year, we had, in 2017, 10 people per day on average died of a heart attack from heart disease, died from heart disease. We had 3,581 people die of heart disease. We had 3,502 people die of cancer, almost 10 per day. We had 1.5 people die per day of diabetes. I mean, these are all serious issues. I mean, we had 1,224 people die of chronic respiratory disease. Now, I understand that none of those things I listed are contagious. Can't, I can't give, Fricker can't catch heart disease from me. So, but what I am saying is, we have to have a metrics that makes sense. Unfortunately, there are things that people got, hypertension, suicide in 2017 was 275 people for the year. Unfortunately, I'm going to guess that 2020 is going to be much higher than that, from the numbers that I've seen and heard even personally. So there's a lot of things other than just COVID and everything that we're doing and a lot of the fear that we're, I just think it's, if we say that we're going to wait until we're at six people per day, I think you're right, Mr. Gray. You know, we better just zip on masks permanently across our face. Because I don't, I don't know that we will get there until there's a vaccine. But I can also tell you that if we have the numbers and the numbers don't go down in two months, then I guess I'm going to have to go back to say that I'm not sure that these cloth masks actually protect us from anything. You know, it's something that we're going to have to get through this, and we need the vaccine in order to probably eradicate this. We're not going to eradicate it with masks. And no, we're not going to talk about vaccines for you people out there. We're not voting on vaccines on this council. But that's the issue that I have. And that's why I actually would prefer to do it every 30 days, actually review the numbers, talk about the numbers, talk about the number of tests, talk about what data there is and how it can be manipulated, and actually look at the death rate and the sickness rate and the people that are being hospitalized. Because if it's starting to turn out that the people that are getting the COVID, the symptoms are less, and it doesn't seem as severe as it was back in April, then I think we can lessen these things up. And I think we can lessen the DHMs and we can get back, more back to normal. Because that's where this COVID is. It's changing every day, correct, Dr. Poor? We don't, we don't know everything about it, and it does continue to change, and the doctors continue to change what they think is right, and so does the CDC. And by the way, I also promised, so, Madam Clerk, I promised two of my constituents that I would offer these two CDC, I just read the 2017 stats of deaths, and then also the weekly updates from the CDC. And it's the graph that shows the death rate, a big spike in March, it comes down in June, we spiked up in July, right about the time when we started talking about that emergency ordinance, and now we're coming back down. We don't know where we're going to be in two weeks. We don't necessarily know where we're going to be in a month. So that's why I would like to reevaluate it based upon this graph. So, and I appreciate, by the way, my constituents that do send me these things, and I will offer both of them to be part of the record. And Dr. Poor, I do want to thank you. Again, sometimes we disagree on things, but Dr. Poor, I want to thank you for all the time and efforts that you do put in towards the health of the citizens of Douglas County. And I know this hasn't been easy and not something that you thought you were going to be doing when you celebrated New Year's 2020. So thank you, Dr. Poor.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick follow-ups. One, I will mention, suicide was mentioned here today. Actually, today is the first day of Suicide Prevention Month, so it is a serious part of this discussion, as well as drug and alcohol abuse, domestic violence, child abuse, all these, gang activity, crime, all these are associated with the subject we're talking about. But to Councilmember Gray's point about the metric, I'll go back to that. I think I said it earlier, but I just wanted to repeat it maybe, that we're being asked to approve something today without even having a metric in place. And that's, if, I would think that if you're going to pass something like this, that you should have a metric in place or metrics in place by which to judge the success of it. Because once it's approved today, it can't be undone, as we've illustrated and pointed out, that it cannot be undone but by an ordinance, which takes three readings in 15 days. So at a bare minimum, it takes 36 days in order to rescind or amend or back off or add time to an ordinance. And that's if there aren't any times during that period that we don't meet. For example, we don't meet on, I think it's October 8th. No, it's October, whatever, it's October 13th. So that would add, that would add seven more days to, you know, a time period which you might have to wait before you could have a new ordinance in place or an ordinance that amends or extends or does whatever. So again, it goes back to the clunkiness of this and that there was an easier way to do this. That path was not taken. But that's why we're here today. That's why we're having the discussion. I'll repeat it again. I would do it by emergency ordinance and constantly evaluate it. But in the meantime, I think there also needs to be an agreed-upon metric, a realistic metric or metrics by which to judge the success of whether or not this process is working. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Harding. Melton. Pauls.
Pass.
Palermo. Fesserson. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Motion passes, five to two. One public hearing can be held for items 43 to 45, A's Communication and Support. Item 43, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 40 of the Omaha Municipal Code to harmonize and consolidate procedures governing various boards. Item 44, an ordinance to amend sections in Chapter 44 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding the Electrical Board and its duties. Item 45, an ordinance to amend sections in Chapter 51 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding certificates of competency for sign erection.
Thank you. Before we begin the public hearings on Agendas, Items 43, 44, and 45. Before we begin the public hearings on Agendums, Items 43, 44, and 45, we have the Planning Director, the Head of Code, Permits and Enforcement, and we have some members of the Stakeholder Working Group here today that will make some opening remarks. Planning Director Fanzlo, welcome.
Sure. Yeah, Dave Fanzlo, City Planning Director.
1819.
1819, Farnham, 11th floor, room 1110. Thanks for the time today. I'm here to speak on those three ordinances that are on your agenda. As you're aware, those Agenda Items will provide for changes in the way the number of boards are governed and also combines some of those boards, the duties of some of those boards. And Anna's going to get into that detail in here a little bit. The latest effort to evaluate these boards, the way they conduct their business, started back in early 2019 when Anna became the Assistant Director for Permits and Inspections. We started having a discussion about how the boards operated, how they worked, or how they didn't, in our opinion, and how we might be able to improve the way they do their business. So after a lot of conversations between me and Anna and a couple other staff members in PNI, we discussed the issue with Mayor Stothart. We discussed the issue with our three Council Planning Committee members, Councilman Jerem, Councilman Festerson, and Councilman Harding. About a year ago, it was back in August, our August meeting, we started talking about it. And I think it's important to note that the updates to the, to these boards goes to their efficiency and how they operate and in no way, in our opinion, compromises the safety of those working in the trades or the general public. So it's been a long road to get to this point today, working closely with Mayor, our Council Committee members, the leaders of the trade industry, some who are present today and some who have sent in correspondence that may be included in your packets. I believe the proposed ordinance makes a lot of sense to ensure the business of these boards work effectively and don't compromise the safety, again, of the people working in the trades and the general public. I'm going to turn it over to Anna, but I will be here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Bespoyazny. On top, it'll shrink it down here.
Okay. Anna Bespoyazny, Superintendent of Permits and Inspections, 1819 Farnham Street. Good afternoon, President Jerem and members of the council. I am pleased to present to you today a consolidation of several of the boards administered by the Permits and Inspections Division of the Planning Department. There are seven boards affected. These boards have control over the examination and licensing of various trade licenses. Presently, they look like the chart that's on the overhead before you. We've got ACAD, Hoisting and Portable, Oil Burner, Stationary Engineers, Steamfitter and Pipefitter, Electrical and Sign Examining. With the ordinances before you today, Planning proposes to consolidate some of these boards, thus reducing the total number to four boards, which would look a little bit like this. So ACAD would stay the same. Steamfitter and Pipefitter stay the same. We are consolidating Stationary Engineers, Hoisting and Portable, and Oil Burner onto one board and then consolidating Electrical and Sign onto one board. The process to get to this point was slow and intentional. Out of the gate, I proposed consolidating these seven boards into one board. This option was presented to the Building Board of Review on November 18th, 2019 for public hearing and comments. It met with much resistance from many of the trades involved. Building Board of Review laid the case over to January of 2020. The Building Board of Review ultimately approved the single board. And although some individuals came around and offered their support, it was not overwhelming. So we went back to work on it. The administration reached out to Mr. Terry Moore. Terry coordinated a meeting with representatives of Steamfitters and Plumbers Local 464. They were very gracious and hosted the administration and the Planning Department on a tour of their new facility. I highly recommend the tour. It was a very impressive facility and a source of great pride. Terry also coordinated a meeting with the administration, the Planning Department, and Dan Smith of Electric Company of Omaha. Dan presented a slideshow that demonstrated the importance of safe, code-compliant electrical work. Based on the input from Terry Moore, Steamfitters and Plumbers Local 464, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 22, the existing board members, and Electric Company of Omaha, the Planning Department was able to generate a much better received option for the reorganization of the boards. I appreciate their contributions to help Planning achieve our goal of making these boards more efficient, operate more consistently within the boundaries of the municipal code, and save taxpayer dollars. I applaud their commitment to their respective trades and their commitment to the citizens of Omaha. The ordinances also include some basic housekeeping. All the boards now have consistent language for eligibility of board members, term of service, and the elimination of compensation. The boards continue to have complete control over the examination and licensing of applicants. It is now more clearly stated that each board may use third-party testing agencies if they so choose. And I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Thanks.
First off, I want to thank all of you in this long process we had of trying to get to this resolve, and it was not easy, I assure you.
Terry Moore, we need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, this is my first rodeo. Terry Moore, 820 South 67th Street. The past president of the AFL-CIO for 44 years and now still working within the trades and other organizations as a volunteer in, in my area. I can tell you the efforts put forth by the brothers and sisters in the labor movement and their officers have been extraordinary. Obviously, things like this hit, reach high momentum and feelings. And obviously, when it's your work and your job, you take it extremely serious. The city was trying to fix something that was broke, quite frankly. And the only way that we could resolve it was all of us get together. And we reached out, and I have to give an awful lot of credit to the mayor. The mayor was willing to meet and willing to discuss and bring her staff aboard to do it. And we had serious, long meetings and with great cooperation from both sides to come to this final agreement. And that would have never happened without her staff. And Anna, for sure, I can tell you, she carried the weight in this whole process. And I want to thank her and thank all of you if you take a positive action on this. There's been a lot of work and a lot of effort in this. Mark, do you have anything you might want to add? I mean, Brad, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Brad Bird, Business Manager, Steamfitters and Plumbers, 3375 Oakview Drive. I also just want to thank everybody involved. Thank the council, the planning board, the mayor's office. And Anna's been really good to work with. We started out in a position that I didn't know if we were going to overcome. We were in a pretty big disagreement on combining all the boards into one. And she listened and she worked with us, and it was really nice. And we have a better relationship with permits and inspections for it, and we're in favor of this. So thank you, Anna, thank you, everybody involved.
Thank you. Does Local 22 wish to be heard? Mr. Hughes?
Dan Hughes, Business Rep., 8946 L. Street, with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 22. Also, Anna, I want to say thank you for the, for your help in getting this done. This actually, for us, goes back to April of 2015 when they were actually trying to eliminate the electrical board. So for us, it's come a long way, and I think we've landed in the, in the right place. So we just want to say we support this and thank you.
Thank you. Senator McDonald?
Mike McDonald, President of the Omaha Federation of Labor, 6001 Grover Street. Before I talk about this ordinance, I want to thank you for recognizing Labor Day, for the people out there that are working every day, the men and women of labor. That is, that's, that's special for them. It's special for me to stand here today as you take notice. Now, of course, we know Labor Day is going to be a little different. I appreciate your discussion you had earlier and how things have changed in our society and how we're all trying to protect each other and make our society as safe as possible. I know you don't always agree, and being also wearing my other hat as a state senator, that's part of the process. But I do appreciate all of you and the work you've put forward. Sometimes government says, people say they don't listen. Well, I know on, on November 18th of 2019, when I testified on this ordinance and then the problems that we had as from labor, people did listen. Because the board decided to take a step back. It's been a long process. But in that process, I want to make sure the, the citizens of Omaha know they have people serving on these boards and also council people. That agree or disagree with you, you will definitely listen. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. At this point, we'd open the public hearing for all proponents. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Thank you. When I first became a part of this council, this was a major issue. So, I mean, I, I did not realize what I was getting into. So to see it being resolved as it is today, I appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that I heard a lot of the union people thank us. Well, you know, it's the other way around also, because I'm sure in the discussions they gave, you know, some of their thoughts and sometimes probably they met some resistance. But I do thank them for being willing to make this work. And I was going to say this earlier, but even when we were talking about masks, I had union people actually thank me. And also had, like, and I'm going to say it because I didn't talk about it on the mask, had the school districts want this, so I thank them. Also, for, I don't know if you realize how many of the major businesses, corporations in the city of Omaha want this. So this, I know I'm speaking a little bit off topic right now, but I think when we talk together and try to work it out, as we did on this particular issue, it's best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also recall the 2015 discussion over these ordinances, which was very difficult and cantankerous. So I do also appreciate all the work that's been done by our representatives in labor here today and also the Planning Department and Anna and Dave. As a member of the Planning Committee of the City Council, we've been involved in this latest go-around for about a year as well and really challenged, I think, Anna, along the way to, to work up front and get this consensus. And when you do that, we have public hearings like we have today, which are welcome and show a great partnership and a great consensus, and that's the way to operate. And although this may sound like, you know, kind of obscure to the average citizen when we talk about electrical and plumbing codes and things of that nature, it is very important stuff. It's very important to public safety. It's very important to our economy. And it's very important to those that work in the trades for their safety as well. So this is a welcome addition and update. I appreciate everyone's involvement, and I'll be supporting this at our next meeting, which I guess is two weeks from now. Thank you.
Councilmember Paul, excuse me, Harding, you're recognized, then Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just quickly say, as I was walking in, talked to Mr. Moore and congratulated him and Brad and Senator McDonald and all the others and working with the Planning Department to get this done. But also, it was noted, this will be a little different Labor Day celebration. And I told Terry, I think Terry told me, it was, it was to be the 43rd. So I said, we'll celebrate 43 and 44 together next year and make it doubly good. So looking forward to that, Terry.
Thank you. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. There we go. I too wanted to thank everybody involved. I know Anna had said possibly out of the gate it was a, a no and the sides weren't coming together. And I know that's the way we saw it as well. So it's a reminder that when something's important and you, and you pump the brakes, that you do get the right choice, at least the, the right foot moving forward. And this is what we had with coming together and making this happen. Dave, thank you. Anna, thank you. Because as we've heard already today, there is a lot of uncertainty in the city going on right now. But there's one thing that hasn't stopped, and that's the development in permits and, and building. I'm sure Planning is, is busy as they've ever been, even though we're in the middle of a pandemic. And to make that happen, you have to have the, the skilled labor in the trades to build Omaha and to move us forward. It's important to have these jobs, and it's important to have these jobs filled. So I appreciate everyone being here. I'm glad we came together to move this forward for labor and to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just add a couple things from my perspective. When Anna first unveiled this at the, at the Planning Committee, I shared with her, when she was talking about how broken it was, I said, Anna, you're right. You're right. You're right. But I'm blessed to have in my neighborhood, my neighbors and friends, many, many, many women and, and men of organized labor. And, and they're telling me this isn't right. And so if it isn't right by them, it isn't right by me. And you know what? To her credit, she, she agreed right then and there with the other members of the committee. She would go to work. And she would, she would forge a solution that everyone could get on board with, and here we are today. So thank you to, to you all for doing that. No further. Okay, next item.
Item 46, an ordinance to authorize and issue sanitary sewage system revenue refunding bond, Series 2020, in the amount of $300 million.
The public hearing on item 46 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 50, a resolution that the Omaha City Council believes that as the city's Health Director, Dr. Adipour, has necessary authority in state statutes and in the Omaha Municipal Code to issue health orders to prevent or limit the spread of COVID-19.
The public hearing on item 50 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? We've advertised the public hearing. Proponents?
U.C. Manus, 3306, Burt Street. I support this resolution, even though it's, it's clear to everybody that what transpired sure didn't have happened. I think that Pete Ricketts, Governor Pete Ricketts, did, was a little much. Locally, the city has asked the county health department to help out with health issues. And that was everybody's understanding. And that's what we thought was the operating situation, and that didn't happen. So this, this resolution, even though it's sad, it's needed. And I, I keep supporting the mask mandate and Dr. Poor. The things that she has said from the start is we need to use non-pharmaceutical responses to COVID. And that would be physical distancing and wearing a mask to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to item 50?
My name is Nicole of 999 South 49th Street, Omaha. And I'm here to bring awareness to all government officials of your personal, civil, criminal, and moral liability on this first day of September 2020. So let's get some definitions cleared first. Asysthmatic means neither causing nor exhibiting symptoms of disease, showing no symptoms of disease nor spreading disease. Secondly, this, this week, the CDC quietly updated the COVID number to admit that only 6% of all the 150,504 deaths recorded actually died from COVID. So this means this week, that's 9,210 deaths. And the under 94%, 2 to 3 other serious illnesses and overwhelming majority of the advanced ages were 90% in nursing homes. You all swore the official oath of affirmation to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, whether municipal or territorial, to the best of your ability against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Your affirmation is your contract with me and each individual man, woman, son, daughter of Nebraska. I am now holding you to this contract. I am holding you to our contract. Violations of our contract are unauthorized. I do not consent, accept, tolerate to whatever you are thinking, saying, and doing and countervention of your contract with me. All of you agents of the government have no authority nor jurisdiction to use the pow, to use the powers I dedicated to you to endanger the safety, health, welfare of myself and each individual man, woman, son, daughter of Nebraska in any and all timeframes. You cannot act outside of your jurisdiction in attempts to convert my constitution, the constitutional activities into crime as crime itself. If you continue to step outside of your scope of authority, you are revoking your cloak of sovereign judicial immunity, which means you become personally and/or both criminally liable for damages to which you are now incurring for violating your contract with me and each, and each individual Nebraskan. These violations are subject to prosecution to the fullest extent. It has been also established law that all agents of the government are held to a higher standard of knowing the government, the understanding and all facts, consequences of their actions, and the strict limitations of their government offices. So you are all there for nullifying and, and all excuses, any and all excuses of not knowing or the transference of responsibility to others whom you relied upon for information. No government agent is above the law. A judge loses all immunity when he acts in absence of all jurisdictions, all jurisdictions. So it is blatantly, it is blatantly clear, you are stating that you are and will continue violating our unalienable rights. And that is until we show you that you have no power, you have no jurisdiction or authority over us. We are aware our enemies are innovative and resourceful, but so are we. The men, women, sons, and daughters of all nations are uniting right now and standing against your tyrannal, tyrannical draconian dictatorship. So please take notice and govern yourselves accordingly.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you, Emmy. I'd like to revise and extend my remarks. I'm against this, but revise and extend my remarks from last week. I was removed for less than that, but on tonight's, today's agenda. That's right. This is outside your scope of authority. Probably out of order. We do have a constitution I mentioned last week, and by the way, I do know what it looks like, so I'll leave a copy for you. I did take some courses from Hillsdale for the last two and a half years. I've had a few courses specifically on the constitution. The spirit of the constitution is not in this chamber. We had today a lot of examples where this emergency law, I'm sorry.
Item 50.
On item 50, okay. That's fine. I'm against it, okay? I'd like to speak about it, the emergency law that relates to it. Don't call me out of order because it relates to it.
Item 50.
The emergency law was not within your powers. The, the number of emergencies and resolutions and changes and amendments to that illusion that flew back and forth between you people and the mayor was not really read or explained to the people. And you took a vote anyway today, seven to nothing. And then you, then you remark about it. We didn't get an opportunity to hear your remarks before you voted on it. So I think your vote ought to be rescinded.
Are there any other opponents to item 50? Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Dr. Tapper, 16909 Burke Street. I just want to say I have nothing but respect for everyone in this room. We all want the same thing here. We want healthy people, right? And so I'm speaking on item 50 today. Am I on a time limit just by?
Three minutes.
Okay. So that being said, I'm a chiropractor who focuses on wellness, epigenetics, immunology. Chiropractic is the study of health and what causes a man to live. Medicine, allopathic care, is the study of disease and what causes a man to die. Okay? My job in practice is the restoration and maintenance of the integrity of the nervous system. Now, what I'm proposing today is that we have a shift in healthcare, a shift in our thinking. I want you to hear me out. We need to move away from the sickness and disease model into the wellness and prevention model. Benjamin Franklin once stated that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. We are listening to allopathic doctors on infectious diseases that claim to be experts on prevention, but they have compartmentalized the body for ease of study, and they have heavily monopolized sickness and disease. The CDC stated that 80% of people are suffering with chronic disease associated with poor lifestyle choices. Americans make up 60, or I'm sorry, Americans are taking in 65 to 70% of the world's pharmaceuticals. They're, these drugs are not helping, but what they are doing is palliating a poor lifestyle. The infectious disease experts are changing the environment to suit the weakened body, but what we need to do is strengthen the body to suit the environment. Fred Barge stated that there is but one cause in disease, the body's inability to comprehend itself or its environment. There is but one, and there is one cure in disease, the body's ability to heal itself. And there's but one thing any physician can do for that patient, and that is to remove the obstruction to healing, thus facilitating it. It is the topic.
Larry, stick to the topic.
Okay.
So. It was, I've been thinking about that, and I think Dr. Tapper's point is the, he opposes our, the wisdom of the ordinance in proposing to delegate to a health director who's a PhD, who is of the mindset that he is trying to oppose.
I'm trying to, yes, convert the way of thinking, the paradigm.
That's why I was letting it go.
Thank you very much. I respect that 100%. Because the current health director is telling us to fear germs. We're told that we're sick because of bad germs, bad luck, or bad genes, but really that is bad science. One to 2% of the pathology has a genetic pathology like Down syndrome or cystic fibrosis. We need to understand that. But 98% of the people that are suffering with chronic disease have a poor lifestyle. Now, I want you to understand, the body has 10 times more bacteria and germs than it does cells. We need to understand and appreciate the symbiotic relationship with the microscopic world that we live in. We don't need to fear germs. If the germ theory were 100% true, we'd all be dead. No one would be alive to talk about it. Germs can pose a threat, but we don't need to fear them like we're told. Now.
Thank you. I need you to wrap up.
Okay. The CDC stated last week, and I believe Mr. Harding talked about that, the CDC stated that 95% of these so-called Corona deaths were actually associated with comorbidities. What does that tell you about the comorbidities like heart disease, cancer, and obesity? That those are the real killer. That is the real epidemic at hand, and if we want to change this fiasco, we need to change the paradigm.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other opponents?
Hi, guys. Ally French at 4213 North 172nd Street in Omaha. Can I ask a question?
Council does not entertain questions from.
Okay, well, that is fine. So I oppose the concept that we have a county health director that will now hold a second position as a city health director, unless I'm mistaken, which was going to be my question, in which case I don't feel that it's acceptable that our city is going to allocate funds for one person. I am wrong. Okay, good. Well, I'm glad to know that I'm wrong, but I still stand here before you.
Not on her time. Just let's wait.
Okay. So with that said, I'm glad to know that's not the case, but still, I find it lacking and wrong to impose somebody to make a mandate on the public that wasn't an elected official, that is just appointed by whomever was elected, but that doesn't necessarily hold the morals and values of the people of this community and what we stand for and what we feel that they have the role to mandate on us. I hope that makes sense. I feel like I'm talking circles. So I hope that you guys will take that very seriously into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
My name is Reagan Simons, 17672 Harrison, and that's in Omaha. I am here to speak on item number 50. I oppose this because Adipour is not a medical doctor and not fit for this position, and let me tell you why. I do represent about 3,000 signatures now for optional mask, something that Adipour does not believe in. A real doctor looks at an individual. When you go to the doctor, do you go with a group of people, or do you go as an individual? You go as an individual because then a doctor can look at the person. What are their health conditions? What are they coming to the doctor for? Adipour has fought to institute a mask mandate for the entire city, hundreds of thousands of people that she has no idea what the health problems might be. As far as, because of her actions, she has helped put into place a mandate that is causing injury to children and injury to our healthcare workers. I know of two children that have passed out at school because of wearing a mask, and their teachers are being complete, they're not being reasonable with the mask wearing, and these children, some of them only get a two-minute break, and their parents drop them off at 7:30 in the morning, pick them up at 5:30 at night, and they get a lunch break and a recess, and some of the kids are wearing masks at recess when it's 100 degrees outside. That is something that Adipour supports and I disagree with. There was also someone who worked at the med center, has to wear a mask for a 12-hour shift. He passed out, hit his face, knocked out his front tooth. This happened a few nights ago because of the mask. I went to a Millard School Board meeting. I told him my concerns about the mask, and I presented a picture of a petri dish. Someone had coughed into a petri dish, and it showed all the bacteria. So I've been asking, we're telling our children to wear these masks all day, what is on their face? I have been asking people to do this study for me. I took it upon myself. You can order these kits on Amazon. I recommend every parent do this. These are samples taken from the masks of my two children who are forced to wear masks all day long, and I wish Adipour would not have cut out because I would ask her what these things are. It looks to me like staph. I'm not a medical doctor myself, but Adipour apparently is into toxicology, and so she would tell me, what are these forms of bacteria? My kids wore these masks for two days at school. I am a parent who uses steam sanitizing. I hand wash my kids' masks every couple of days, but even so, this is them wearing them for two days. How many parents are washing their kids' masks? How many parents are on top of that? Adipour is not fit. Anyone who would do this to children is not fit to be in this position. I strongly oppose this. She is not a medical doctor. She puts policies into place that make healthy children sick. Our children are suffering. I know Amy understands this because she is a mom, and I encourage Amy to test her child's mask and to see what is on their little face all day long. This should never be on a child's face, and I oppose Adipour as having any influence over our city and any influence over all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Last call.
I made copies.
Thank you. Just a second so we can turn off the light, so. There you go.
Crystal Ellis, 159th Avenue.
We need the actual address.
Oh, 1015 South 159th Avenue.
Thank you.
So many things. So just like everybody's stated today, we don't know the long-term effects that these masks are going to have on not just children, but all the compromised people with the comorbidities that Adipour has spoken about, Ben Tapper has spoken about. So if it does that to healthy kids, what about the ones that are not healthy that we're trying to protect, which includes my son and my immunocompromised father? I was always told as a caregiver, which I've been for over 15 years, I was very worried about my father or son getting something from me. I specifically asked the medical doctors, who are, I'm not going to say their names, but they're from Children's Hospital, from Med Center. They were the best of the best. I went to an accreditation place to get them recommended to me. And they said, you know, a mask outside of a hospital or sterile environment that's not controlled is not going to be of any benefit. All of these places we are going to are not sterile or controlled environments. And again, the masks, if he is, everybody's like, oh, common sense. The common sense would show that that is being trapped into the fibers. So you guys are mostly all healthy, I'm sure, so you're not going to see any effects for quite some time. This is something, I mean, looking back in history, you know, dentists would tell us to put like mercury and silver fillings. Look what we found out about that. What side of history do we want to be on here? It's going to be bad. What about the psychological damage that it's going to do to children? We're treating them like diseased infest. I have friends that their kids got sent home because they were at the same lunch table with four other kids, six feet apart. Her kid's sent home. The kid's asking why. What do you tell the kid? You know, oh, you're, you're, you're a sick little child. What is that going to do to a kid's mentality? The testing, the testing is at best 60% accurate. PCR testing, even by the person, the scientist that invented the test, said that the test should never be used to detect a specific virus because it was designed for RNA sequencing. This is RNA sequence. COVID-19 has never been isolated. It never passed COCs, postulates, and you don't have to be a rocket scientist to do the research and to read the facts. They're out there. Are they on the news? No. Are they in this room all the time? No. But it needs to be looked at, and it needs to be addressed. So is 60% accuracy, is that a good accuracy rate to you guys? It's, it's been on New York Times. It's been, you know, slid in there here and there.
I need you to wrap up.
False positives. So once again, manipulated data, this is being manipulated on the meta, the metadata level. If you mess with the way you scrape data in the meta level, it's, it's moot. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? There are no more opponents. If you wish to speak in opposition, this is your last call. I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes, the item has been placed on file.
Non-action items, items 47 and 48, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray. Mr. President. Question passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:47.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.